Twenty nineteen dash fourteen, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
No.
Sorry.
Register your votes, please play your votes.
I mean if I were walking back home and there was Saint Anthony Street motion for it.
Thank you. Number eight, moving on, consideration of a change order for additional work on the rail campus additional improvement projects with Van Kirk Brothers. Jake isn't here, he has a child being confirmed tonight, if I read his email correctly.
Correct, so you get me. The not, the not engineer.
Frank, bring it on.
Not engineer.
Alright, as one of the elements involved in our development of the school project, our development of the rail campus, and our authorization to acquire what we know as the Agator property, is the creation of the rail campus's new entry boulevard as we refer to it. And this will be the new access point off of Highway fifteen to the west, and this will ultimately close the current Walker Road S curve. That's kind of dangerous, hard for industrial access. And so we've been working to create this change order for Van Kirk Brothers who's onsite now in this exact area, performing work to do all of our utilities, street work and everything else. And so this is just an expansion of our current thirty acre bid to add in this additional work so it can be completed in a timely manner. I can hit on some of the highlights, some of the big ones is, and you'll see, the estimates in there by the engineer, which is Jake's estimate, and then ultimately what the numbers came in at. So... Your final number that I'm gonna have for you, let's see.
Which one did I have?
I think that was the, that was Jake's. I have the bidded change order, so. There might be, there may be amendment on these numbers. Van Kirk Brothers submitted their numbers on, uh, this one. You're rendering, you got a lot of rendering going on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is this the May third stuff?
No, we have the May sixth one that was turned into us, and it's the final signed one. I have a copy here of it, the, one of the substantial, we'll walk through the substantial differences from the estimate that you have that was prepared by Jake. The first one is mobilization. Based on the current timelines right now, the subcontractor to concrete work would have to leave on mobilization to come back, so they upped that one to fifteen thousand, so that's one of the changes. The other one is in the twelve inch PVC C nine hundred restrained joints, water main, board and case. I'll talk about these all together. There's also a twelve inch PVC SDR twenty six sanitary sewer main, board and casing. These are the final numbers submitted by Van Kirk. Those two numbers are substantially higher. One would be fifty thousand for the water main, ninety thousand estimate for sewer main, which is different than what you guys have. The reason being, yeah, they're substantially higher in their final numbers. This is a specific requirement for casing and going underneath the highway. And this takes us out to the Remory side, and so that's one of the things that we had in this. We estimated that at some point in time, this would be the only point where we could cut utilities over to potentially develop in the future that other side, which is out of the floodplain. If we don't do this now, these costs will be incurred later, and we will rip apart all of your highway improvements that you're also gonna look at tonight. Because they're right underneath all the tapers and the turn lanes and the roadway and everything else. So it's Jake's recommendation to substantially save a huge amount of money to put in this casing and just run it over to the other side and leave it. And if it ever develops on the other side, we don't rip apart our utility. It causes undue delay and traffic issues and everything else in this area. It's not gonna be any cheaper, so that's one element that's different. The last one is the pavement number. Was adjusted per unit, that's your nine inch PCC pavement down. There's three thousand thirty four square yards. Estimate there I think was fif- sixty, went up to sixty three, so that number went up to one ninety one. And then the final one, go down to your ditch, just in totality. Jit, that was actually lower, Jake's estimate one hundred and forty four oh fifty eight, so. But with those casings and everything else, the mobilization. I also think site clearing, we actually went onsite, went through and made a site plan for all of the trees. Clearing, we're actually gonna burn onsite, we talked to Mel, and we're gonna hold Chief Kimsey. Rather than pay the money to pick it up and take it over to the bird site, we just said, there's gonna be so much stuff onsite, we're just gonna do it onsite, we'll put it in a pile, just burn it there. It saves considerable, but Jake's estimate was twenty five thousand and Van Kirk came in at thirty five, so. In total though, your total contract amount for this change order, the final number now will be, this is your, you have one million, one point five, the total number now with these casings will be one point seven oh four six thirty five, as submitted by Van Kirk on May sixth.
What was that final number again?
One million seven oh four, six thirty five, sixty, sixty three cents if you want to put around on those. Me and Jake had an extensive conversation about those casings. We thought that was probably the biggest number that we were off on in trying to put those under. But we looked at alternatives, if we could move it down even further. But at that point, when you hit the manholes, you're in the bridge, so it doesn't work, or you're further than the developable property down there, so. But if that was something that you guys are interested in not including in this, we could take it out and not run it across. But this is gonna be our best time not to interrupt the roadway, because they'll be ripping it up anyway. So if we wanna get that ready and then allow the developer to come off of that, because we'll just take it across the street and then cap it just on the other side of the right of way. This is the time to do it, because we will, we'll do it at substantial cost later, so.
With, with the idea we're running it across because that may develop over there at some point?
Yes. We've also had a request to connect from Remory, we got a request to connect to city utilities and then be annexed in potentially in the future and then. But there's no other way for us, we looked at running it from the south, because you can't go through the river. Running from the south, you'd have to run it from basically just south of the NPBD transmission station, substation, all the way north to get utilities on the other side without jumping in here, so, this is a cheaper option. If we don't wanna do it, that's where we can find some savings. But it was in the original estimate that Jake had put together, but it came in higher than Jake thought it would, so we need to take it out. We can do that tonight. But now, we recommend that we move forward so we hit our timelines for getting that roadway in. Because this will, ultimately this will be the construction access. Once it's viable, even though the turn lanes may not be completed, this will become the construction access for the school project, rather than them going all the way up to Isaac Walton Road, around, down and back to the west. Because they're not gonna use that S curve on Walker Road. And so once this roadway's put in, they can use that for construction access.
So where's the additional hundred and fifty coming from?
It'll come from the same developable costs. So for this one, it's a water and a sanitary sewer, it will come from those two funds ultimately.
Where, where are we at? And I know you're not gonna have exact numbers in John, because you might have to help out. When we sat through, and we're doing all of our projections on what we thought it was gonna cost to do all of our development out there. We were, we were trying to be conservative, so we were putting things a little bit higher, but, and where, my own opinion, it makes sense to do it now. Why would you wanna tear up something that you put in? So, you know, and if we have, if we can bring a service to Remory, we have something to help pay for it, obviously not a whole lot, but then also bringing the annexing in.
Could open up that area for more development.
The other one, because we're not at that one yet, but you'll see if it's in here. The numbers on the cost estimations for, by the, by Olson on the turn lanes is actually a hundred and fifty thousand less than your, than your project superior. What we were thinking for the turn lanes, that ended up being a hundred and fifty thousand less, so. Sort of a wash, yes, but nevertheless, Jake wanted me to note, again, I'm not an engineer, but wanted me to note the differences on his estimate from Van Kirk ultimately put in.
So we just see a motion on that?
It'd be a motion to approve the change order.
I make a motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Register your votes, please play your votes.
Only because it's water.
Item nine, consider approval of final plan, can you respond, NDOT review and authorization to advertise for bids on the sewer rail campus Highway fifteen improvement. Jake, oh Jake's gone, Frank.
Oh Jake, 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 Jake. Let me dig through what, what, make sure you guys all did your three hundred page packet, so I can make sure I.
Two thirty four. Well, that's the PDFs. Does that help you?
Doesn't help me.
No, no. Says packet page two thirty five.
These are the bid specs for, I'm really looking just for his estimate page. I don't think you guys wanna hammer through all of the.
The cross-sections.
Yeah, I spoke, we'll just talk about this while I'm looking through pages, looking for what I'm trying to get to. There we go. I found it, okay. Keep a lot of stuff in. In the future, we want to directly put this in there, we'll put a link for you and we'll host it on the website. So you know, we learned that lesson on this one. This is the bid out project for the final approved NDOT turn lanes. The turn lane down the middle, the tapered lanes and the de-acceleration lanes, as designed by Olson and approved by NDOT. And so we would just like to go put this out for bid, I saw the, the bid estimates on this. I think we had originally had it near eight hundred and fifty thousand in our rail campus development budget, and the estimates have come in, I think they're just south of seven hundred thousand dollars, so, for actual construction. And so we would recommend the specs as proposed and to put them out for bid to see what we get for numbers on getting this constructed.
Any questions from anyone? For Greg, otherwise this would be a motion to go out for bid.
So, second.
Second, any other discussion? Register your votes, play your votes. Item ten, consideration of understanding for sewer rail campus site maintenance with SFE LLC.
We, this item, I and I spoke with our representatives from Schooler tonight. We're just putting the last finishing touches on this, I think we're across the finish line. I sent it off to our staff late, late last week, and we were going over and finalizing. I've done my approvals and finalizations. We're working through getting the last things in regards to your utility rates, because as we mentioned when we brought the project on, they have utility needs and, and items that we don't even have rates created for yet. We've always had them floating around, and so we'll finalize those in exhibit form. And then another one is that they'll be taking advantage of the NPBD economic development rate. So we were having some discussions with representatives and site selection, representatives of NPBD, about finalizing that, because that will set the utility rates, we believe, and we'll have to pass a new utility reordnance on the electric side as well. So we're finalizing those things, but we think we're basically done with the general terms of the MOU. And so we'll bring this one back if it's okay with Schooler at the twenty first, with the hopes of then closing shortly thereafter and being done with this project, that'll be everything, so.
Well, that'll be the beginning.
That'll be the beginning.
Yeah, I don't know what you're finishing, but we're just, we're just.
Finishing my, my paperwork I'm writing. So, we'll just, that one, we'll come back to you at the twenty first.
Do we need to table it?
We didn't actually receive anything other than an agenda item, so it's only do we, I mean, it was on the agenda as consideration of an memorandum, do we need to do anything?
You can sure move the table to the next meeting if you want.
Let's go ahead and do that.
Table number ten to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Register your votes, please play your votes. Item eleven, consideration of authorization of city personnel to sign an agreement recognizing Tenico Sewer Facility as a producer of hazardous waste, in the grade to respond.
Yep, this, we did this a year ago, and so, actually we did it probably, looking back on it, September, maybe even to July. And so every time there's a revision date, they'll probably send this back out to us and re-update us. But for us to kinda cover ourselves and make sure we put eyes on it, and since this one is signed by the mayor, even though there are versions signed by the police chief and by the fire chief, we wanna make sure that we have official authorization, so. If you have any questions on it, otherwise it's just our agreement to go respond to hazmat, as we normally do.
Move through.
Is there a second? Second, any discussion, questions, register your votes, display your votes. Item twelve is consideration and ordinance amending municipal code repealing sections two oh nine dash two dot one through twenty nineteen dash two dot seven relating to coin-operated amusement devices. Is that a typo there?
Maybe a typo, maybe two oh nine dash two point seven, we'll make that correction if it is.
Alright, prepare to be excited. We had a request from Tom at spare time, it's gonna take a little bit of education here. So what this relates to, coin-operated amusement devices are your pinball machines, pool tables, your claw machines, and then predominantly what we're seeing now are the touchscreen games. We have a few of those in town where you can play, they're called games of skill, not games of chance, that's a big distinction, talk to the mayor. And so what happens is those devices are licensed through the state, and that app, the reason for that apparatus, or apparatus of licensing them through the state is then there is no sales tax collected on it. So the transactions in the quarters you put into them are dollar bills, there's no sales tax collected on that. In exchange for that, you license it every year with the state. The state recognized, well, if we're not collecting any sales tax, then local municipalities aren't getting any sales tax either, because all sales tax goes through the state and is remitted back to the city. And so they said, and gave authorization for cities way back when, to have their own licensing fees locally to kind of basically offset the fact that you're not getting any sales tax from these devices. We got a request from Tom at spare time to take a look at this and maybe do away with it. I think we have five machines in totality, maybe a few more have been added in last year at getting split, but that's it. In regards to the number that we collect on these, and we collect twenty five dollars a year for a license.
Permission.
What?
Permission.
Permission?
Per machine.
Per machine, okay, there you go, sorry, per machine. And we probably spent nearly that much per machine chasing people down, trying to get them to license theirs, because they forget everything else, and so we had the discussion internally. Do we wanna keep doing this, it's not a massive amount of money. We're not using it for regulatory purpose, we're not going out making sure that there's games of skill versus games of chance or anything else. And so we brought this for your consideration after reviewing it with the mayor, with Kelly, and then I also shared it with the council president. And so, I don't know that it's gonna be a revenue issue for us. I don't see an explosion with these devices in town, even if there were, you know, get a ton of revenue off of them. And so, if it may help out and take one thing off the table for a few of our local businesses to not have to get bothered by us every year on, because again, we're going around every year and they don't remember to do it, and we have to remind them and remind them and get it to them and everything else. And that's just more of our staff time that we're wasting for five licenses on five machines, maybe six or seven.
So is this an amendment to the?
No, we just repeal it, not collect today, mayor, maybe down with it.
An ordinance to amend and repeal.
Amend and repeal, I'll make that, or introduce it. Amend and repeal.
There's eleven steps here, folks. An ordinance to amend municipal code of the city of Sewer, chapter two oh nine, article two, amusement devices, to repeal sections two oh nine dash two dot one through two oh nine dash two dot seven, relating to coin-operated amusement devices, to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fourteen, and the title is hereby approved, and a motion to dismiss with statutory rule.
So move.
Is there a second? Motion second, register your votes, please play your votes. This is, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fourteen, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? The question is, shall ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fourteen be finally passed and adopted, register your votes. Please play your votes. Uh, this is our only ordinance tonight, so we need that a motion to make the ordinances a part of the current record.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Register your votes, please play your votes. I think we're at, resolutions and ordinances. Item thirteen, say administrative report.
Uh, probably three big things, one is we're gonna wind down as I spoke about the Schooler project and try to get all of those agreements and finalizations and exhibits done, so you can have everything ready for you on May twenty first, so look for that. Uh, the second one is we continue to keep winding down on downtown revitalization projects gearing up. We did get information that one will be reduced and one has been rescinded, because, uh, the one that was rescinded was BLD Denzlogi. That project is not moving forward in that building. And so it was applied for for that building, so they're not gonna use that building for their project, so.
Where are they going?
I don't know, we'll fill you in, they're looking for other space for that one, so. But Scott Denzlogi is not using the DTR funds, and so he's rescinded those back. And then we have another project that its scope narrowed back, and so they're gonna give back some of their funds. And so what you'll see by, before the end of the month, is we'll recall LB eight forty committee to meet and sort out what to do. We'll try to get some recommendations from Trey at SEND, who administers our funds, on what to do with them. His recommendation is to move forward on anybody that needs emergency funds that already's in, in the hoppers, that has SAM registered and all the federal hoops have been jumped through, and then open it up for anybody that's already SAM registered outside of our DTR group, to anybody else. There'll be sufficient funds, there'll be a good number of funds. But a lot of other ones have been given their notices to proceed and getting started, and I think after night's approval of TIF, Fury Building will get started on their DTR. So we'll be meeting this week on theirs, Helmick Building also will be lined up then, so.
What about Barrow Regal's LB eight forty?
Still being paid, I checked in with Nick tonight, we're discussing, and the only one that's, um, we have two LB eight forties that are in behind other paintings. They're not, they didn't pay like right on the first this month, and so he's following up with them, and otherwise everybody's up today, which we include BLD, so.
So they're still planning on doing something, not that building?
Yes, I know Jonathan's actively working with them in different projects, locations, so. They're still going strong and they're paying back, Barrow eight forty has committed, so.
Is there an option for us, I mean, we, we had more applications when we did DTR than we could fund, so we funded them through LB eighty forty. Is there any way, if we're getting funds turned back in, that we can redistribute dollars or not?
Nope, because they're already gone, they've already launched themselves, so. And as I said, I know that we have, I'm not trying to play hide the shell game, we have an emergency situation on the building on the corner over here on East Seward Street, or Seward Street. Suzanne Gorovich's building, uh, once it dug into that one, the estimates were substantially higher than the job, because of the nature of that building under the stucco.
Can we help her?
We, well, LB eight forty in the city council can decide to do that, I'm not gonna allow them to do that, but that's what we're gonna, that's what Trey's recommendation was, that that became an emergency, because that's what she was doing anyways.
Was the, pointing at all the, yeah.
Yep, and so the recommendations to, to bring that one forward, and there'll still be money after that available for somebody if they wanna do something small, like redo some windows or something real quick, so. The last, the next one I have, we talked about Schooler DTR, last one I have is me and Jake went and met with the Ridge Run, Snow didn't hear my report, the Ridge Run homeowners association, Councilman Wilken was there. Pretty good positive discussion about our thoughts and ideas for East Seward Street, because I'm very concerned about the current state of that street. As we talked about when we were finalizing the one on the sixth, they were kinda concerned like, hey, we thought you were gonna work on it more this year, and we pushed it up to next year, but it would've been complete anyways to next year. We walked them all through our timelines, our plans, we showed them the concept development, we already did the topo survey so we can engineer it, but we shared with them the design idea, which one of the design ideas included a roundabout. And they've shared it within their, we met with the board, the board's now shared it with all of their membership, or at least gotten started in that process, and so very quickly we'll come back and see if we can get feedback on that, and then that will be part of, potentially part of the design element of East Seward down, is a roundabout.
How did that go?
The deadline was June first.
To respond back.
For them to respond back to us.
So we'll, we'll, I don't wanna comment on how the board, I think that was kind of our own internal discussions.
We'll, we'll vote at that meeting, following that discussion, and basically either.
Present a, like a.
Make a recommendation to go for, look forward.
Basically what I presented to them is almost all of the right of way we would need to acquire to build the, the roundabout is on their property. And so if they're willing to move forward and they, that's how Jake, I had Jake design it that way so we didn't have to deal with a ton of different property owners. But if they're in favor of it and they approve it, that means we can move very quickly, get it engineered, and then bid it out this fall when it's prime bidding time, and then have somebody come in early, early spring and get all of East Seward all the way to the end of the city done. So that's our hope.
Any update on our pedestrian issues around Middle School?
Uh, Jake did one over, I think it was First and Langworthy, he did a report, and so then he's moving to yours as well, so. He has never done one of those for us before, so.
So he did a report on, on Langworthy and?
First and Langworthy, and he prepared that one to say, here's how I'll do these. Now I'm gonna go move to.
Are we seeing these reports, or?
He submitted to us, and then we'll submit it to you along with the recommendation, the resolution, so you'll have the report and then a recommendation, so.
I need a report on the house.
On the house? That was assigned to Kelly to do that.
This is gonna be soon?
Yes.
Okay, because you gotta run the paper for thirty days, right?
Yeah, yeah, we gotta read orders back here, so.
We're looking till next June, or until June now, okay, we wanna move on that.
So we'll have, you'll have traffic count data for the time that you, because basically what we have to do is Jake goes and sits out there during school hours and watches traffic and counts it in all the different directions, so.
During his break, right?
During, during his break, so. What? Uh, it's more confusing than I would've guessed.
It isn't beyond though just counting traffic, I mean, I, I don't know that traffic is the problem as much as we have just the number of children traversing back and around and beyond school just because somebody live up there. The kids in the street during the summer, they're, you know, they're riding their bikes, their basketballs are flying across the street. There's all sorts of things going on in the summer, these kids are very much outside, and just to have something there.
You need something there, a control device, but to put in.
Not a device, just a saying, we got lots of kids here, slow down.
Well, I'm trying to explain this the best I can, if you're gonna put up a yield center or stop center, control traffic, because we will not put up pursuant to the MUTCD, any sort of signage about kids at play. I already asked about this for my own neighborhood, that was quickly turned down. And so pursuant to the MUTCD, which is the standard across the nation. And so, pursuant to the MUTCD, which is the standard across the nation for all road signage, there are no like kids at play, please slow down sorts of signs within that scope. Now, private people can put them in their yards or you can do other things, but if we want to control traffic on the intersections, that was the concern. And maybe we need to talk more with Jake, you and me about what it is you want because the recommend, our understanding of the recommendation is there need to be either a yield sign or a stop sign or something to, so kids don't...
Yeah, and I think, I think what we're seeing is the traffic is coming north on Star Street, coming up around the curb and by the time they hit the northern part where the middle school is, they're coming at a fairly good pace. They're flinging around then to Maple, they make the turn or they go straight and they turn on one of the newer streets. But they're going, they're fast and there's just a lot of kids.
Everything is, if they're going too fast, then I know who else to talk to.
Yeah, so instead, instead of watching the high school like they always do, why ain't they up there?
Actually, we do more patrol around the elementary than we do any other school.
I mean, I always see...
Right, right, we are making a considerable effort this year to be there when, at high traffic times because of the congestion is, you know, the, an issue as well.
So I'm just saying, you see like fifteen, not the other way.
Making a valid...
Councilman Becker, I think, I think what's best is you and Jake and I sit down and we'll sort out exactly what we want to do up there and, and take a look at and have his professional opinion on it.
My question is, have you guys visited with the county about the Waverly project?
Yes, Jake met with Casey and who is one of our representatives.
Becky.
And Becky, he met with them last week and they were in favor of it. We, I don't know if I'd send it off to Kelly last week or not, but we'll need to draft an interlocal for them to at least propose. And then that interlocal will allow us to bid Waverly Road together, both our portion and their portion to the east of us, all as one. The one last thing that Jake was checking into is, is it even reasonably feasible to get it done in one season? Because if it's not, then there's no benefit. And also, we'll just clog everything up at that point twice in a row. So, if we bid them separately then, you have two crews, at least they can work at the same time, you didn't bid them at the same time. And then at least it's all cleared out at once and we rip the band-aid off. We just don't want to clog up Waverly Road for two seasons in a row.
You would not make farmers a...
I've already heard about, or my dad.
AJ lives out there, wouldn't that be good?
Yeah. And so our intent is if, if they're going to move forward and do their portion of it, we might as well try to do it together. If we see the benefit to getting it done, again Jake's thing is, if I get one contractor do it, it might be cheap, but they may not be able to, they may not have enough time to get it done. They might work the whole season and still, and we don't want that, so we want it to be time efficient, so.
That does not include the trail or anything?
Trails a year, at a minimum a year afterwards, because we need Waverly Road in first.
Anything else? Does that contain a motion to accept the report?
So move.
Second.
Moving second, register your votes, please, display your votes. Any future requests? Seeing none, Jonathan, upcoming events.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Two quick things, on May sixteenth, we have our networking coffee and contacts at Wild Card Drastic. We encourage you to consider attending or to tell, tell your constituents about that. And then May twenty-eighth, we've been working with the mayor and administration to put together a public work session to discuss affordable and workforce housing. Acknowledging through the natural growth of our community as well as the proposed growth on the rail campus that we need to have a larger conversation. And we're really trying to bring together all public bodies that would have an impact on this from a, from a public policy standpoint. So, obviously, US council members, but also planning commission, CRA, the Seward School Board. We've engaged the chair for that, Ryan, as well as superintendent, and they're supportive of this. Also the Seward County Housing Corporation, the Seward Housing Authority, the Chamber Board, and then we've also invited Milford City Council, Utica City Village Trustees and county commissioners to come to really hear what is affordable housing, what is workforce housing, where are our needs? And from a practical standpoint, this is the kickoff to our updated housing study that we're working on this year. I think this is an incredibly important topic for us to consider. It's proposed to start at five thirty in the Civic Center basement, would really ask that you would consider being a part of that discussion and to encourage your fellow council members as well as the other appointed officials through planning commission, CRA, to attend this event. The first hour will be hearing from local experts on different topics. And then the second hour, we'll all be talking about what are some of our options to help work towards a building more affordable and workforce housing, whether that's in Seward specifically or within our surrounding communities across the county to support Seward's growth, again naturally, and then also through the rail campus.
Did you see your inviteee being there first?
We sure can, at this point, we didn't necessarily do a, a direct invitation, but I sure can do that and could literally do that tomorrow.
Don't I not do that?
Sure.
Given all the things we've heard.
Yep, I'll do that.
I would denote for you, my intent in putting this together and working with Jonathan through the administration and the mayor is especially that second hour, it's designed to be a discussion amongst elected boards and officials. So this is an opportunity that doesn't come very often to have the city council sit down with the school board, for instance, and have a direct dialogue about issues surrounding housing, workforce housing very specifically. This might be the time to say, hey, what are your thoughts about TIF and housing? It is designed to be a, this is not for the public to come like we have here at city council. It's not going to be an open forum, it's going to allow just random people to come in and start asking questions and discussing. It is meant to be a discussion amongst civic leaders, elected officials, to have a conversation among themselves about what you'll hear and then what's been going on and what ideas you have amongst yourselves to further the idea of housing, workforce housing in Seward and Seward County, so.
How do you handle open meetings with that?
We're not required by law to let anyone speak at every meeting, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. And so, it'll be a work session, this is designed for you guys to do your work. Public can attend, it'll be an open meeting for the public, but we'll call the meetings. If not a sufficient number of you show up, well then we don't have a quorum issue anyways, so we don't care. But, we're designing it so everyone's going to call their meeting to order, because they'll all be there. And then you will be actively discussing things that are policy concerned and they come before you.
We're not going to vote on anything.
Nope, there'll be no action taken, but it's designed to be a work session with call meetings and everyone hopefully will be there because it'll be very, very important.
And I'll echo that, that it's important that we're there, you know, as we move forward with all the stuff Jonathan's saying, I'm just reiterating everything that's been said. We passed through so many boards and so many commissions, we, we all need to be on the same page. We put together a comprehensive plan that some of us in here were a part of and every one of those boards had an invitee to be part of that comprehensive plan. And then when we get down to, granted it's not, this is what we're going to do, it's just a plan, it's the idea of what we want to do. When something comes down that, then all of a sudden you have opposition, no, we're not going to go that way. You had your opportunity when we were putting together the comprehensive plan to voice an opinion, so. You know, with, with Schooler coming in and with the growth we, we hope happens over the next five, seven, ten years, we're going to have a need and we all need to be on the same page and work together to make it happen instead of creating any conflict, I'll put it that way, between different boards and whatnot as we move forward and stuff.
I would encourage everybody to attend and just what Jonathan and I have been, as part of SECVP, been doing with stakeholders and people in our group is, I think you'll, you're going to hear some real eye-opening information that I don't think anybody really realizes. And it's very important that we understand the breadth of the problem and, you know, where our potential solutions are. So I would really encourage everybody to attend.
Nothing else, there are motion to adjourn. Register your votes, display your votes. Thanks for making it easy, buddy.